All right. Apologize for the late start, having a thunderstorm here in Miami. Traffic was pretty bad, but we're here now. Welcome everyone to, let me just make sure everybody can hear and see me all right. Is everyone able to hear and see me?
Yeah, like I can see here.
Okay, great. And welcome everyone to our fourth installment in the study session series of the text, The Ancient Language of the Soul. As you can see on your screen right now, this is information on the text on our mysticknowledge.org website. If you click on the link, New Book Sale, the navigation bar on the left-hand side, you'll find this page will come up and will give you information on the text as well as the links to where you can order it from both Amazon or from the publisher. Additionally, you can also send us an email if you would like to request an autographed hard copy by the author. And we will send you instructions on how to go about that. Alright, thank you Ernest. So in the modus operandi, I guess you could say of these study sessions is basically I'll be reading through a couple of chapters of the book. And then on our Sunday study session, we'll get back together. And sorry, now Sunday open discussion classes, get back together and discuss some highlights that I will make in the text as well as pose some questions to the author, Mr. Naomi Davis, who's also our teacher. And then follow along with any other discussions or question that you may have. So without further ado, let me switch into the text and begin today's readings of chapters seven and eight. And these are a bit long chapters. So we may end up going the full two hours today, but that's okay. I was not able to make highlights and notes beforehand. But by Sunday, I'll have the highlights ready so that we can go through key points that I found through the reading and hopefully stimulate some thorough discussion. Actually, last Sunday, we were only able to finish chapter five. So this Sunday, although we'll go to chapter six and maybe chapter seven, and if possible, chapter eight, we'll see. Or if not, then we'll, we may be a chapter and change behind in our Sunday open discussion. We'll see how it goes. Chapter seven, the Mystic Knowledge of Mantra. It's a tremendous knowledge on the science of mantra that is not commonly known. This ancient science of mantra is the holy science of sound vibrations. The eastern doctrines of tantric yoga give a complete science on this all pervasive power of sound called mantra sastra. In the description of those deosophical and metaphysical constitution of man, the casual body, etheric bodies, mental bodies, subtler bodies, astral bodies, and the physical body is mentioned to describe the makeup of man. The thing that is not openly mentioned in a clear, understandable fashion is man's sabda bodies or the nada bodies, sound bodies. These sound bodies are the powers that the spirit and the soul use to manifest, activate, and sustain all the other bodies. The spirit uses sound to call the soul into manifestation. And soul uses sound to manifest all its vehicles of expression and sustain them. Sound is the carrying agent of man's consciousness. God, or the absolute, spoke the word sound and said, let there be many from the one. And the spirit of God manifested itself as countless points of consciousness that embodied itself in the material of the soul consciousness. The material used to manifest the soul consciousness was the essence of the spirit, which is known as the initial spoken word or unified and coherent sound vibrations. The soul uses perpetuate sound vibration to modify the universal mind substance and cosmic energies to build the casual body, etheric bodies, mental bodies, subtler bodies, astral bodies, and the physical body. The sabda bodies can be described by examining the following components that make up the network for the sound bodies. Number one, the bindus. Number two, the chakra system. Number three, the chakra bijas. Number four, the chakra petals. Number five, the nadi system. And number six, kundalini. The bindu. The bindu is considered to be a drop from the divine. In some cases, it's described as a spiritual germ. But in the mantra sastha doctrines, it's described as a point that is a point of consciousness. This bindu is a massive state of shakti power that produces a state of compactness of energy and readiness to create. Within this compactness of energies, there are several forms of shakti consciousness. It is here where the shakti power moves from an unmanifested state to a manifested subtler state and eventually a gross state. Nada and bindu are two states of shakti that when it's under the proper conditions, it produces this thing called creation. Nada is an inner flow of sound shakti, the supreme conscious will that permeates the universe. The bindu is the absence of sound. It is supreme silence. Yet it is the potential of all sound and the source of all things. The bindu is the all-knowledge space that connects the soul with the spirit. It is void of all things, and yet it is all things. And it is the potential of all things. The point of consciousness is described as such only to give some type of explanation to us in our limited state of awareness. We describe it as a point because we lack the ability to demonstrate infinity. So we describe it as a point that everything comes from and everything returns to. And yet it is the producer of all, and it is void of all things, making it the potential of all things and nothing. A good example of this massive state of shakti power is the sun of our own solar system. In fact, the tantric doctrines describe a three-fold bindu force that we live, move, and have our being in as the sun, moon, and fire in Sanskrit terms, triguna tamaka. It is a sustaining force of all life. The tantric doctrine state that the three-fold bindu are the sun, moon, and fire. Each one of these shakti powers are the mighty forces that is modified into the etheric subtle and gross vehicles of expression that the soul uses. Of course, we can see that the physical sun is a creative and sustaining force of all life on earth and the solar system. Mineral life, vegetation life, animal life, and human life all depend on the life-giving sunlight that radiates the earth 365 days a year. Physical science tells us that the sun, in the form of sunlight, supports all life on earth via photosynthesis and drives the earth climate and weather. Its spectrum contains lines of ionized and neutral metals as well as very weak hydrogen lines. This means that it generates its energy by nuclear fusion of hydrogen nuclei into helium and is in a state of hydrostatic equilibrium. Neither contracting nor expanding over time. The tantric teaching and the advanced metaphysical teachings view the sun as a mighty celestial, being that first three-fold bindu that traveled through countless incarnations to reach this god-like status of creating and sustaining trillions of light streams within this solar system and beyond. They see the sun as the great vehicle of expression that God, the absolute, uses to speak the creative word, which brings into manifestation life as we know it. It's believed that a creative mantra, the word, is repeated every thirty-two minutes by the sun, releasing a wave of tathic matter that contains a stream of pranic energies. This tathic matter creates huge waves of sonic solar plasma that acts as a carrying agent for five major pranas. These solar sonic vibrations blanket the earth in a specific pattern. The ancient tantric doctrines tell us that three hundred and sixty tathic rays are received from the sun. This three hundred and sixty tathic rays may account for the three hundred and sixty degrees of the earth circumference and its three hundred and sixty-five days in a year. These solar tathic rays are conditioned by the earth and moon and perfectly arranged by the soul of man with the help of these cosmic intelligences that have always been there for mankind and the mother earth after her acceptance of the human and animal races. Now, in the Serpent Power book written in nineteen nineteen by Sir Arthur Avalon, he describes these tathic strings of matter as three hundred and sixty tathic rays that link itself with the etheric bodies of man through the chakra system. The tathic rays are separated in three unequal groups, and each group has two unequal parts that is embedded in the six chakras along the spine. The three groups of tathic rays are governed by the vibrational modes of motion brought about by earth, sun, and moon. The earth, or fire, embedded its tathic rays in the base of the spine chakra, the mulahara chakra, and the sex chakra, svadhisthara chakra. The sun embedded its tathic rays in the solar plexus chakra, maripura chakra, and the heart chakra, anahata chakra. The moon's tathic rays embedded its rays in the throat chakra, visuddha chakra, and kriya chakra, ajna chakra. The bindu of each chakra has a magnetic pull on these tathic rays, which it used to bring about a subtle and gross manifestation. These strings of tathic vibrational signatures assist in slowing down the cosmic energy prana within the chakras to allow various subtle and denser degrees of intelligent formulated patterns of astral and physical mass of manifested energies that the soul can use as tools of self-expression from life to life. The following table shows the number of tathic rays embedded in the chakras, the names of the tathic groups per chakras, and reflective qualities of the combined tathic groups with the names of their conversion points. And let me switch to that. Table five, tathic ray within the chakra system. For the base of the spine mulahara chakra, the name of the tatvas is bhuta. The number of rays of tatvas is fifty-six. Reflective qualities and group name, fire-earth, and the conversion point is the rupa granthi. For the sex chakra, svadhisthana chakra, tatva's name is agni. Number of rays sixty-two. Reflective and qualities, group name, agni or kanda. It also belongs to rupa granthi. Solar plexus, maripura chakra, its tatva name isapas. Number of rays fifty-two. Group name is the sun. And it belongs, conversion point of vishnu granthi. And happy heart chakra, anahata chakra. As the name of tatva there is avayu, has fifty-two, fifty-four ray, tatva rays. The group name is surya, and it also belongs to the vishnu granthi. And the throat center, visuddha chakra, its name of its tatva is akasa. Has seventy-two tathic rays. It belongs to the moon group or chandra. And it is, conversion point is the brahmakranti. The kriya chakra, ajna chakra, name of its tatva is manas. Has sixty-four tathic rays, also belong to the chandra group and belonging to brahmakranti. Those are the total three hundred and sixty tathic rays. Sir Arthur Avalon also described the chakras as massive tathic shakti centers with the points of consciousness of I, the soul, which is the self-expression of the spirit, and the I am, the spirit, a divine spark of the absolute or God. This is described as the bindu of the chakra. The point of the all-knowledge space or the door to the soul and the link to the all-in-all, the spirit, the absolute or God. Our moon is another maha bindu force, a compactness of shakti power that aids in creating and sustaining life. For our earth, the moon is a great magnetic force that helps to balance the water levels that covers seventy percent of the earth's surface. The moon is also used as a great reflector of the sunlight on the dark side of the earth. As one half of the earth moves away from the sun, it circles around the mighty sun for the moon is the great illuminator of the night skies. On the subtle levels, the moon is that maha bindu force that conditions the three hundred and sixty tathic sonic rays and the cosmic energies radiating from the mighty sun. The tantric doctrines state that the moon represents the mental forces that permeate the earth and the etheric bodies of man. It is also believed to be a force that governs the fluid levels within the physical bodies of men. The two upper chakras along the spinal column use the moon tathic rays to regulate the mental realms and the etheric energies that flow through the heart chakra and kriya chakra. The chakra system. The main components of the chakra system are a series of sound vibrations of different frequencies. These sound vibrations are said to originate from the soul in its efforts to involve parts of its consciousness in order to bring about a limited state of consciousness. The soul projects a perpetuated sound vibration, the spoken word, that set in motion a series of modifications on the universal mind substance and cosmic energies that formulates various vehicles that it works through on several realms of existence to gain its karmic experiences on the physical, mental realms, the astral mental realms, the etheric and the etheric mental realms. This perpetuated sound vibration that resonates from the soul represents the consciousness of soul within the subtle and gross bodies that's built from the mind and pranic energies. The soul develops a series of vortex centers of concentrated sound frequencies that extends out, creating a network of sound consciousness that act as a body matrix of complex sound divisions. These vortex centers of concentrated sound frequencies and body matrix of sound has a magnetic pull and modification power over the universal mind substance and cosmic energies that it uses in order to express its consciousness through. This is the sabda body, sound body, that stands behind all living things. This is the consciousness of all living things. Within this sabda body, there are chakras, bindus, bijas, the chakra petals, the nadi system, and the kundalini. This is the core consciousness of any being here on our mother earth. The chakra bijas. The Sanskrit word bija means seed mantra. In each chakra, there is a seed mantra, bija. The key word here is seed. This suggests a source from where something grows from. A seed mantra or a seed of sound vibrations suggests two major things. That the seed mantra is an extension from a greater source and that it, the seed mantra, has the power to extend itself. In the tantric doctrines, the chakra bijas is reported to be the sound made from the manifestation of the chakra itself. Therefore, this produced sound is the name and power signature of the chakra. Now let us examine this further. The power of anything is within its name. In any language, the name of something tells us its origin, its history, its possible makeup, and its functioning ability or power. When a carpenter wishes to build a piece of furniture, he first creates a mental image of this furniture within his mind. After the carpenter has thought this through in great detail, he then places the specification of his design to paper. The carpenter then gathers the material and tools necessary to construct his design, and he builds the piece of furniture. Now from all his mental and physical work, the carpenter names the piece of furniture a rocking chair. His naming of furniture gives definition to it, the function of it, and the purpose of it. Now everyone who hears of this rocking chair automatically conceives of the functional use of this chair and will be driven to purchase it. For the name itself embodies the purpose. Well, the tantric yoga claims that the bija sounds within the chakras are the embodied power of that chakra. It holds the power and design specification within its tones, notes, and pitch of the seed sound bija. The bija is the embodied consciousness of the chakra, just as the rocking chair is the expressed idea, consciousness, of the carpenter in gross manifestation. The bija within the chakra is the expressed will of the soul in subtle manifestation. And its main purpose is to involve itself in a denser energy pattern as embodied consciousness. Each chakra and bija within it is an aspect of the soul functioning on a particular level with a particular energy pattern. The soul splits its consciousness up through the manifestation of the bijas and chakras of the body. The chakra system is the soul's conscious splitting instrument. This briefly explains this mighty power source of the soul's ability to operate on several levels of existence. The supra-soul conscious level, the super-conscious level, the subconscious level, and the conscious level. The subconscious level and the conscious level. Each one of these levels exists on an etheric realm, mental subtle realm, astral realm and gross physical realm. This seed mantra bija within each chakra is the sound produced from the formation of that chakra. In physical science, we are told that each atom is made up of the same components, a neutron, proton and electron. The things that make atoms different from each other is the atom's electronic configuration. The neutron, neutral charged particles and proton, positive charged particles of an atom is the nucleus of the atom, which is motionless and it never moves but stand in the exact center. The electrons' negative charged particles spin around the nucleus creating a valence level that breaks into the all pervasive electromagnetic spectrum which tends to blend and shape these rays that define and determine the nature in which the atoms had assembled. In other words, the atom's ability and expressed character is determined from the angle and position the electrons breaks into the electronic magnetic spectrum. Now what I am trying to say here is that the power and functioning of the chakra bijas is determined from position of that chakra. Appears within the etheric structure. For example, let us examine the bijas that appear within the chakras along the spine. These groups or series of letters within each chakra has the following qualities listed in the chakra bijas table under the column of molds of motions qualities. The column in the same table to the right lists the devata and the flow of prana exhibited by the divata. Table six, that's six major chakras and their bijas and flow of prana. First we had the mudahara chakra, the base of the spine. Seed mantra is L I M. It's four petals. And on those petals are the letters va, sa, sa and sa. The modes of motion qualities is prithivi, a smell. The devata and its flow of prana is brahma or hamsa. Next we have this pharisthana sex chakra. Its bija, the seed mantra is vam, V A M, has six petals. Those are the letters in the petals. The modes of motions qualities is apas or taste. The devata and its flow of prana is Vishnu. On garuda. Next we had the Manipurasolaplexis chakra. Its bija, the seed mantra is R A M, ram. Has ten petals and those are the letters. Its modes of motion quality is tjas, fire. Devata and its flow is rudra, honorable. Four, we have Anahata or the heart chakra. Bijas, seed mantra Y A M, yam. Has twelve petals and those are the letters on those petals. Its modes of motion quality is vayu. Touch. Its devata's flow is istha. And the five, we had the Vishuddha or the throat chakra. Its bija, seed mantra H A M, ham. Has sixteen letters, sixteen petals. And on those petals are those letters, the vowels. Its modes of motion qualities is akasa, hearing. Its devata and its flow is phathis, it is. Sadhasiva. Six is the ajna of Kriya Shakra. Its bija, seed mantra is O M, has two petals. Those are the letters on the petals. Its modes of motion qualities is manas, mind. And its devata and its flow of prana is shanthu. Those are the fifty petals and letters of the Sanskrit alphabet. The seed mantras bijas extend its sound vibrations onto the petals, creating the letters. Each bija and letters has a particular mode of motion that produces a specific quality of shakti power and the flow of prana. The devata of mantra represents the flow of prana, vaha. That flows strictly according to the karmic pressures being exerted on it. The devata also represents the higher consciousness of man. When the bija or a series of bijas is formulated together into a mantra and a devotee practitioner performs japa, a repetition of mantra diligently and repeatedly, the devata makes itself known. When mantra is repeated constantly with great concentration and devotion, the aura begins to spin. The spinning of this aura creates a screen of protection. Such is the power of mantra as stated in earlier chapters. The word mantra means to think, man, and to protect and free. Tra. Spinning of the aura is the devata of the higher levels of consciousness of man manifesting itself as a flow of power that frees man from his basic thought patterns and protecting him from a negative flow of energized thought waves. The chakra petals. The chakra petals along the spine represents the fifty letters of the Sanskrit alphabet which are bits of sound vibrations that is extended from the bijas. These bits of sound vibrations, petals, are lines of force that act as waves of consciousness which are called sensible matter, bhutas. The first five chakras petals represent the forms of bhutas from the base of the spine to the throat center. The Kriya center and the center between it and the crown center are chakras of tathvas constituting the mental bodies. When these bits of sound vibrations are intoned through gross audible impressions, it incites the subtle lines of forces that carries the waves consciousness throughout the etheric structure, creating the mental instruments that operate subtle bodies, astral bodies and gross physical body. The seed mantras and chakra petals are the embedded samskaras of the soul. They are the shakti power signatures of the soul speaking these things into motion. The tantric doctrines tell us that the original sound made by the soul to manifest this are the points of consciousness. Bijas and chakra petals move into a samskara state of being where it becomes the mental impressions of the soul. When men intone these mantras or sound vibrations properly, it has a natural magnetic pull on these embedded shakti power signatures within the chakra system. The practice of constant recitation of the mantra by man moves the embedded mantras, embedded shakti power signatures out of a state of samskara consciousness into a active state of shakti power. The nadi system. This is the largest portion of the sound sabda body that man works out of for countless incarnations. The word nadi comes from the root word nad, which means to move and movement comes about from sound. In the diococcal circles, it's called the etheric body or auric body. This nadi portion of man's existence, which is the auric body embedded within and around portions of the etheric body that is and make up the sound sabda body that is never discarded life after life. It is the vehicle that the soul uses the sacred sonic vibrations from the chakras through the nodis to build the mental subtle and gross bodies. This etheric sound body holds the embodied consciousness jiva of a man as it muscles its way through the etheric subtle astral and gross physical existence, one reincarnation after another. The nadi system is the extended lines of sonic vibrational forces from the chakra petals. These nodis, these nodis push the qualities of the sensible matter cosmic forces throughout the nadi lines of force that move forward and build the subtle and gross vehicles of expression for the soul by creating hundreds of modifications to these energy patterns. There are three types of nodis and eleven named nodis. The types of nodis are described as follows. Positive charged nodis, which are called pingala nodis and is located on the right side of the body. Then you have the negative charged nodis, called the ida nodis and is located on the left side of the body. The third nadi type is called the shishumna nadi, which is located along the spinal column. Within the nadi system, these nodis branch out from the chakra petals, creating thousands of branches numbering seventy-two thousand up to and above two hundred and thirty thousand nodis. The nodis are sonic tube-like lines of force that carry the shakti power of various qualities and mental energy configurations throughout the nadi system. Which helps to slow down the pranic forces in order to bring about embodied consciousness for the soul. The nodis travel from the mudahara chakra moving upwards toward the ajna chakra where it terminates. On the left side of the mudahara chakra, you have the ida nodis branching off and moving upward and intersecting with the next five chakras briefly crossing over to the right side and moving back to the left side. This movement creates a configuration of the energy flow that brings forward the qualities of mental lunar energy patterns that possess a feminine energy quality. This energy flow is said to be lunar energy quality, representing a subtle mental flow within all the bodies. On the right side of the mudahara chakra, you have pingala nodis branching off, moving upward and intersecting with the next five chakras briefly crossing over to the left side and moving back to the right side. This massive flow of power within the etheric structure also creates a configuration of the energy flow that brings forward the qualities of vital solar energy patterns that possesses a masculine energy quality. This energy flow is said to be solar energy quality, representing a subtle vital life flow within all the bodies. Kundalini. Kundalini is the primary life force of the human body. It's the greatest cosmic energy given to the soul, the life streams of this earth. Through the logos of this earth to gain the necessary experience needed in this classroom called the planet earth. The greatest portion of this power of Kundalini within the human body lies dormant and untapped at the base of the spinal column. Kundalini is that shakti power that has moved from the great perfect equilibrium state of shiva and shakti to initiate the process of the involution. The process of involution can be described as the manifestation of the soul and its tools of expression such as the nadi system, the nadi nuts or the chakra system, the supra-conscious mind, the subconscious mind, the conscious mind, the pranic system, cosmic energies within and surrounded the bodies, the subtle bodies and the physical body. When this shakti finishes the creation of all the above tools of expression for the soul, it rests at the base of the spine by revealing the great shiva power within itself and then coiling itself around this shiva three and a half times. This shakti is called Kundalini at this stage. This power of Kundalini is the cosmic life force within the physical body, the subtler bodies and mental bodies of man. The power of this Kundalini radiates throughout man's subtle bodies and physical body. This power is the key to man's evolution. Kundalini is that power used by man to unlock the tremendous power of the soul and spirit by activating the major chakras that are located along the spinal column. Each chakra has what is called a bindu, which is a point of consciousness of the soul and a doorway to the all-knowledge space of the spirit. The presence of the bindu creates a tremendous vortex of power that the soul manages within and outside the chakras. The presence of the bindu attracts various components to it that make up the chakra. These components within the chakras or nadi nuts can be described as, one, numerous vibrating strings of tathic matter. Two, a number of seed mantras or bijas. And three, a mantra for each chakra. On the outside of the chakras, there are something called grantinats that is used to manipulate this tremendous presence of the bindu and the flow of the cosmic energies, mind substance and hundreds of vibrational strings of tathic matter. The grantinats are the conversion points for the conditioned vibrational strings of tathic matter that radiates through and from the sun and then is conditioned by the earth, moon and other celestial planets within the solar system. Grantinats are the last vibrational configuration that manipulates the vibrational strings of tathic matter within man's etheric nadi system before it solidifies into layers of subtle bodies, astral counterparts and the gross physical body. Kundalini is dormant at the base of the spine, but a portion of it is located throughout the body, running throughout the nadi system and penetrating itself throughout the etheric bodies, subtler bodies and the physical body. All the actions within the body require the power of Kundalini for its movement from the blinking of the eyes to breathing, thinking, speaking, walking and running. This power of Kundalini is that shakti power within the body. And it's that shiva power within the body located at the base of the spine and at the crown chakra. Sahasara chakra. When the dormant power of Kundalini is activated and moves up the spine through shishumna, the central nadi system where ida and pingala nadi energy meets, it opens the point of consciousness of the soul and the door to the spirit's all-knowledge space. The power of Kundalini unites the nadi nuts and grantinats. The power of Kundalini unites the Nadi nuts and granti nuts and allows the great cosmic energy to flow unrestricted. I'm sorry, the power of Kundalini unties the Nadi nuts and granti nuts and allows the power of cosmic energy to flow unrestricted. This power of Kundalini inhibits the lower solidified manifested matter and activates the etheric substance to assist in raising subtler vibrations throughout the subtler bodies and man's consciousness, thereby allowing the supra conscious mind to manifest itself. Kundalini is the power that travels through the shishumna and opens up the chakras by calibrating them to the point where the vibrational strings of tattvic matter, the seed mantras of the chakras and the main mantra of chakras operates on the higher levels of consciousness. When man uses the power of Kundalini to raise his conscious mind, he operates on the higher levels of consciousness of man and gains tremendous control over his lower mind, subtler bodies and physical body. The result is this, the results of this is the so-called supernatural powers of all kinds, what the yogis call the cities, psychic powers, such as clairvoyance, clear audience, psychometry, telepathy, telekinesis, etc. The proper awakening of this Kundalini power and control of it turns man into a superman. This all pervasive sound vibration trapped within the body is called Kundalini and is described as the power of consciousness that sets in motion the universal mind substance and the universal supply of cosmic energy to express the will of the soul through its many incarnations, life after life. Kundalini is supreme sound in an unmanifested state of motionlessness, but with all the potential to make sound and movement. It is said that before creation, there was only one supreme being or absolute consciousness, God, with endless potentiality in a state of complete static, in an absolutely pure motionless state of being. Within the subtle bodies of man is a reenactment of this. The four states of sound. Then this supreme being, for some reason totally unknown to us, saw fit to speak the word, released a sound vibration. This word is known as the great mantra that set this static state of endless potential of mind and cosmic energy prana into motion. It is the creative word for all life. It is the word that gave form to all life. It is the word that holds the thought configuration for all manifested form, be it animated or unanimated. Therefore, this word or sound vibration is the consciousness of all forms. This sound vibration modifies itself in four distinct states through this activated mind substance and cosmic energies formulated by the initial release of the first sound vibration. The tantric doctrines describe how the following four states of sound move toward form. Number one, para sound. This is the supreme sound as pure potentiality in the divine will of the absolute, arising from the union of shiva and shakti. This is the subtle level of inner sound that permeates all things. This is considered to be motionless casual absolute sound, sabda, which exists within the Kundalini consciousness of man at the mudahara chakra, at the base of the spine and within the flame of the logos of earth from which all life streams of this earth must pass through in order to enter the wheel of rebirth, samsara, on the realms of earth. Number two, pasienti sound. This is visible sound of the mental images prior to thought. This is the sound that arises from the subtle level of sound. It graduates from the first state of sound into the power of consciousness that forms the mental images prior to thought. This wave of dormant consciousness, this wave of dormant conscious sound, sabda shakti, extends itself from the mudahara chakra to the manipura chakra, the naval center or the solar plexus center. This aspect of sound, sabda, is the first movement of the eye consciousness and the this consciousness or the whole consciousness that became many aspects of consciousness. Number three, mahayama sound. This is the intermediate level of sound as manifested thought. It is this level where the visible sound, pasienti, graduates to manifested thought forms with continuous motion. It is here with this level of sound builds motion before it solidifies into gross audible sound. This initial power of sound consciousness continues its journey by modifying itself from the pasienti sound located at the solar plexus center into the heart center, the anahata chakra, giving inner meaning to its movement. It is here where the naming of this sabda power occurs. It is here where this sound power manifests its ability to mold mind and cosmic energy into shapes by forming the subtle bodies of man. Number four, vikari sound. This manifested sound, a gross coarse audible sound. This is the final step in the four levels of graduated sound. It is the solidification of sound in gross intelligent form. At this level, consciousness exists on several realms of existence, the casual or supra conscious realm, the etheric realms, the mental realms, the astral realms and physical realm. This wave of vikari sound represents the gross aspect of consciousness as gross speech and gross physical body. This sound shakti power, sabda shakti, is located in the throat center, the shudra chakra. Vikari sabda is the corresponding gross aspects of the subtler forms extending from the mahayama mental configuration. We can see these powerful forces at play in a true analysis of gross spoken speech. Spoken speech is a physical vehicle for thought. Organized thought is a subtler form of sound that resides in the inner subtle realms of man's mind. Coherent gross audible sound that expresses itself with words that make sentences to convey messages outside of the mental framework of your inner thoughts is the vehicle that subtle sound uses to project its subtle forms to the gross realms of existence. Sound represents organized movement. As the supreme sound activates the all pervasive mind and cosmic energies, it creates endless forms of shakti configuration. This para sound is the first spoken word, vak, that manifests the conscious will of God. This conscious will of God is the first sound and the first sound is the consciousness of all forms. The conscious will is the shiva aspect and the consciousness of the forms is the sound vibration that creates the boundaries of the manifested form in a framework of divine law, karma, knowledge, vidya and a specific time, kada spans. The constant movement of these forms is the shakti power. I will go deeper into these four states of sound later in this write-up to show how these four levels of manifested sounds affect all manifested levels of existence. In the tantric doctrines, they describe the supreme being as shiva, pure consciousness. Now this shiva is the all and all, the divine spirit of all life, the absolute God. Within this shiva is the shakti power, cosmic energy and the power of vak or sound. To help imagine this, let us visualize the model of an atom. In the dead center of the atom, we have a nucleus which consists of the neutrons and protons. Now these neutrons are particles of neutral energy. It is positive and negative energy particles that probably cancel each other out. Now the protons are positive charged particles that shares the center of the atom with the neutrons. On the outside of the nucleus are rotating electrons in constant motion circling the nucleus of the atom, creating a duality of power. The nucleus of the atom is a static motionless power with all potential located in the exact center of the atom. In the orbit of the nucleus are the rotating electrons in constant motion, which represents the power of action. This is what we call the duality of the atom. The motionless power of the nucleus is the shiva aspect of the atom and the constant motion of the atom is the shakti power. When we consider the vibrational force that initiated the motion of the atom out of the motionless part of the atom, we can see the trinity power of the atom, the motionless power, the sonic vibration and constant motion. What do I mean by this? In the atom, you have the nucleus that is stable and motionless with great potential. In fact, the atomic weight of the nucleus is a thing that determines the name and position of the atomic element on the periodic chart. The electrons rotating around the nucleus express the form, color and motion of the atom on the elemental periodic chart. Now, the electrons of the atom strings forward from the nucleus of the atom and gets initial vibrational rhythm from the nucleus, which sets the electrons into motion, giving the atom its electronic configuration. The nucleus represents the shiva and the electrons represent the shakti power. The vibration that sprung the electrons into motion can be considered to be sound, nada. In conclusion to this subject, let me say that the goal of this book and chapter is to show how sound or mantra within the body structure, the sound that reigns from all things and the sound that permeates all space is the essence of God's presence throughout all creation. Okay. Chapter eight. What is cosmic energy or prana, its relationship with nada, sound? Second. Cue up tables for chapter eight. In this chapter on cosmic energy, the intent is to show the student the origin of this power and its relationship with sabda or nada sound, how this power flows down from an absolute source, God, and moves toward a perpetual movement throughout the universe with the help of nada. This nada wave brings about a continued modification of cosmic energy that brings it into a state of gross solidification of this power through what we call creation. Then the soul of man uses this prana that's being radiated throughout the universe to build and manage his various vehicles of expression. Prana is the universal life force of all things. Everything that we have talked about thus far can be described as a modification of this prana. In this chapter, I hope to go into deeper explanation of the nature and origin of prana, cosmic energy, so the student can have a greater and clear appreciation of prana. It is said that prana radiates from the one source, the absolute, because it is that aspect of the absolute was activated by a sound vibration, nada, out of a complete static state of endless potential, which brought about the beginning of what we call creation. This wave of nada makes possible this perpetual movement throughout the universe. In our explanation of prana, there are four major levels that we can view prana from. It's my intention to try and present the known pathway of the modifications of this shakti power from a cosmic level to a human level. I have chosen this manner of representation to try and give an easy to understand method to approach of approach to clearly grasp this subject. The following are the subject headings for this chapter. One, the cosmic level of shakti or prana. Two, the solar level of prana manifestation. Three, the terrestrial level of prana. And four, the humanoid level of prana. The following diagram lays out the above outline of the four headings. The modifications of the shakti chart shows how the pranas move from a highly supreme state of operation to a more subtle and gross state of manifested expression in this shakti power. Second. One second, it's not allowing me to show. Having some difficulty with that, so I'll come back to that at the end. Cosmic level of shakti or prana. When we examine the ancient tantric doctrines, it states that shiva, the supreme presence of God, spoke the word and this word released the sound vibration called nada, which is a continuous wave of sound vibration called nada, which is the conscious will of God. This wave of nada vibrations help to manifest the shakti power wrapped in a nada. This wave of nada vibrations helped to manifest the Shakti power wrapped in a nada out of the Shiva. Then this Shakti power with the use of nada force modifies a part of itself into four Shakti principles, which are as follows. One, Shakti as mind substance. This is a universal or infinite mind consciousness of the nada Shakti power wave of sorry, this is a universal or infinite mind consciousness of the nada Shakti wave of power that permeates the universe and gives conscious awareness to all forms and shapes. It acts as a magnetic force that holds the configuration to all forms and shape that extends from the four principles of Shakti. Number two, Shakti as prana. This is the all pervasive vital life force of the wave of nada Shakti that acts as the fuel for all forms and shapes within manifestation. It is the main source of power within creation, whether it's subtle or gross. Shakti, number three, Shakti as vijana. This is the aspect of knowledge within the nada Shakti wave that holds the essence of all things and governs this wave with the supreme knowledge and understanding of the karmic pressures of the divine law that structures all creation. And before, Shakti as ananda. This is a spiritual bliss state within the nada Shakti wave that permeates the universe and sustains all forms and shapes with a preservational forth force within the nada Shakti wave. It's also known as a flow or wave of love energy that permeates the universe and holds all things in manifestation and is a transforming power for all things. We live by the grace and love of God. Out of the Shakti principles came the Mahabhutas. These Shakti principles move forward and created five distinct sound vibrations that wrap themselves in the Shakti power and is called the Mahabhutas. The Mahabhutas are the subtle universal cosmic energies or Shakti power that expresses those infinite universal subtle elements, which are described as follows. Number one, akasa. This is the first nada Shakti wave within the Mahabhutas. This is the etheric sound quality within the nada Shakti wave. It expresses the quality of space by throwing or pushing the pranas into a form that creates a line or conduit of infinite space, which acts as a caring agent for all the other Mahabhutas. The conduit of space is an endless infinite area of space that is actually indescribable. Akasa is the Mahabuta that all Mahabhutas work through in order to express their specific qualities of the nada Shakti powers. Akasa is the thing all forms and shapes come from and is made from. All the Mahabhutas are made from and are part of the akasa substance. The vayu, tjas, appas, and prithivi are all components of akasa and are considered Mahabhutas themselves. To use an example of this, we could consider a beam of light. When looking at a beam of light through a prism apparatus, we can see the inner spectrums that make up the beam of light. We merely notice that there are arrays of colored light spectrums within the beam of light, and each one of those light spectrums are still considered to be light, not a byproduct of light, but light itself. Just as akasa is Shakti nada and the Mahabhutas, which are the principal configuration for prana formation and the frequencies of the nada are nothing but aspects of Shakti that produce all form. Vayu, this expression of the nada Shakti wave gives accelerated speed to the Mahabhutas or pranas. With the state of the second, with the start of the second expression of the Mahabhutas, vayu, this cosmic etheric substance throws the wave into the form of tiny spheres that exhibits accelerated speed. Vayu was also described as an air quality or power that pervades throughout all space. It seeks to fill all vacuum. Because of this exhibited power, it is said to also express the power of touch. This locomotion speed modify the nada Shakti wave to express another component or quality of the wave that expresses itself as fire and color, which brings forward the next Mahabhutas. Three, tjas. This expression of the nada Shakti wave has the duty of giving the Mahabhutas, pranas, the ability of expression. It carries the quality or power of fire and color, which gives great strength to the evolution process of solidification. The acceleration of the vayu bhutas brings the fiery heat of the tjas bhutas that unlocks the colors wrapped within the Mahabhutas. Countless colors express themselves on all realms of existence from this process. This stage of the tjas Mahabhutas that brought color forward also ushers in the next Mahabhutas, which cools the nada Shakti wave of Mahabhutas down. Number four, appas. With this expression of the nada Shakti wave, we get the cooling effect that comes into play with the properties of contraction being given to the Mahabhutas, pranas. This brings the resistance factor into play. It is with this bhutas that the solidification process can begin to be seen as the first visible forms of manifested Shakti. This aspect of the Mahabhutas wave is associated with the quality and power of water and taste. Number five, prithivi. This expression of the nada Shakti wave brings about the power that covers up space, solidifies, with its natural desire towards gross matter. A concentration of nada force and Shakti power is manifested in this state of the Mahabhutas, which exhibits itself as a compaction, nada wave force and Shakti power that produces coherent that produces cohesive resistance. This allows the highest principle and qualities of nada forces and Shakti powers that manifest itself on the very subtle realms of existence to the most subtle grossest realms of manifestations, producing countless of different expressions of life. These Mahabhutus is what the nada wave and Shakti principles use for the building blocks of creation. The Shakti principles are like four infinite planes of existence that the Mahabhutas are built upon. The Shakti principles allow the supreme Mahabindus to manifest themselves as a massive point of concentrated Shakti and nada sources of power that projects this nada and Shakti power as countless life forms in all different types, forms, and shapes in countless realms of existence. This wave of nada or Sabdi forces projects itself from the Shakti principles as pure consciousness embodied in the Mahabhutas, creating the subtle universe that the physical universe is built upon. Within this all pervasive nada consciousness of Shakti power, there are the Mahabindus, which are the centers of compacted concentrated points of nada and Shakti power that we call galaxies, solar systems, suns, planets, and moons. All these celestial bodies are supreme points of consciousness that split their consciousness up into countless parts to serve countless souls. Solar level of Shakti or prana. The ancient Tantric yogic philosophy tells us that the sun is the major source of this universal supply and prana for our solar system. This mighty being known as a sun receives this all pervasive cosmic energy from the absolute and irradiates it throughout the solar system and galaxy. The ancient text describes the sun's radiant quality of being a huge aura of tathic matter extending from the sun, engulfing the whole solar system and even extending outside the regions of the solar system. This tathic matter is the result of the sun issuing a great sonic vibration that permeates its immediate surroundings and extends out modifying itself as needed. This tathic matter that extends from the sun is like a huge solar plasma field that all the planets exist within. This tathic matter is a mode of motion that's created from the sensual impulse which keeps matter in a certain vibratory state. This tathic matter has five distinct modes of vibration, which mirrors the prana and gives a vibratory motion to the prana. It must be understood that this tathic matter is only a modification of prana itself. This prana is radiated from the sun by a sonic vibration that issued from the sun every thirty-two minutes in this sea of tathic matter, that which gives life to the five vibrational modes of motion. The solar logos level is the mighty sun. There is little that we can say here except to try to describe what our feeble minds can comprehend of this. As I briefly explained above, the sun receives this prana from the universal supply of cosmic energy, the absolute God. The mighty sun then acts as a pulsating instrument for this cosmic energy, prana, radiating from the absolute. The sun then releases a sonic vibration every thirty-two minutes that radiates this prana from itself, creating this huge wave of solar substance that vibrates everything that is within its aura and pathway with this pranic substance as it moves on its journey through the galaxy. As the sun rotates on its axis and moves through the galaxy, it creates a huge magnetic environment that holds the other celestial bodies within its orbit. Each one of these celestial bodies or planets receives this prana being radiated from the sun. In return, the planets send a percentage of this prana back to the sun and the other planets within the solar system. In radiating prana, the sun brings about a modification of it through the rotational movement and deliverance of the prana. We are told this by ancient, by the ancient texts of Tantric philosophy, that this modification is described as tathic matter produced from the sonic vibrations and solar rotation. The tathic matter seems to be a combination of prana, the sun's solar substance, the modification of both of these forces from the rotation and sonic vibrations being released from the sun. Another factor that could be part of this tathic matter is the solar light being radiated from the sun. The ancient Tantric text suggests that this tathic matter from the sun has three hundred and sixty tathic rays or degrees being radiated from the sun. These tathic rays builds itself up and arrange itself in various forms and creates various energy signatures that allows levels of life expression such as planets, moon, vegetation on the planets, animal life on the planets, and humanoid life on the planets. The tathic signatures seem to be a result of the pranic motion when it's being radiated from the sun and the motion of it as it interacts with the planets and life forms on the planets. The tathic signatures seems to be affected by the lifespan of these pranic signatures. By lifespan, I mean the measured time units of the pranic motion as it moves from one energy pattern to another. There are five major motions that continues to repeat itself and create a perpetual motion that have long-term effects on the manifested energy patterns or energy signatures that are radiated from the sun and live in a sea of tathic matter of solar plasma that surrounds the sun. The solar plasma responds to the following rotation patterns and movements. Number one. One is the constant rotational motion of the sun as it radiates the prana or cosmic energy toward the mother earth and other planets. Number two. Another motion is the movement of the sun through the galaxy or the rotation of the galaxy through the universe, which has a repeated effect on the energy patterns. Number three. The third perpetuate motion that would seem to have an effect on the energy patterns is the rotation of the planets around the sun. Number four, the fourth perpetuate motion that we most speak of because it directly affects our immediate energy patterns is the rotation of the earth creating the north and south energy patterns, which defines the positive and negative flow of energy. And number five. The fifth perpetuate motion that affects the energy patterns of the life forms here on earth is the rotation of the moon as it orbits the earth. These energy patterns dictate and highly influence all other energy patterns within the sea of the solar tathic matter, solar plasma field, which includes the directional flow of this cosmic energy. Also, the sea of solar tathic matter that radiates from the sun influences the general natural quality of this cosmic energy. In order to truly understand this subject, you must realize that the sun's presence extends far beyond its physical manifestation. This solar logos, the sun, has a physical manifestation as its subtler physical manifestation that extends hundreds of millions of miles from the sun's physical manifestation. All the planets orbiting around the sun exist within this subtler physical manifestation, which is the solar plasma field of the sun, or in Sanskrit terms, the solar tathic matter of the sun. Now, each one of the planets has its own tathic signature patterns and expresses these tathic patterns according to its position within the sea of the solar tathic matter. What do I mean by this? Each planet has its own cosmic energy configuration, which is based on where the sun gave birth to that planet or the position that the planet took within the sea of the solar tathic matter upon its incarnation and the orbital journey it takes around the sun during its incarnation as the sun makes its journey around the galaxy's central sun, a rotational pattern it takes around the sun. The rotational configuration of each planet within the solar system produces particular qualities that creates hundreds of energy patterns that places certain pressures on the life forms within this sea of solar tathic matter to define the tathic limitations that makes up their physical and subtler manifestation. The physical scientists would call this prana and tathic matter subatomic particles if they were able to recognize the existence because of the tremendous subtle power demonstrated by these mighty forces. The tathic strings of matter seem to have The tathic strings of matter seem to have intelligent signature patterns that give and maintain life to various energy forms. In the Serpent Power book written in nineteen nineteen by Sir Arthur Avalon, Sir John Woodruff, he describes these tathic signatures of matter as three hundred and sixty tathic rays that link itself with the etheric body of man through the chakra system. It describes the three hundred and sixty tathic rays as separated into three unequal groups and each group has two unequal parts that is embedded in the chakras. The three groups of tathic rays are governed by the vibrational modes of motion brought about by the earth, fire, sun, and moon. Each one of these groups has two unequal groups of tathic rays that embed itself in the chakras. The earth or fire tathic rays embed its rays in the base of the spine chakra and the sex chakra. The sun tathic rays embeds its rays in the solar plexus chakra and the heart chakra. The moon tathic rays embeds its energies, I'm sorry, embeds its rays in the throat chakra and chris chakra. These strings of tathic vibrational signatures assist in slowing down the cosmic energy prana within the chakras to allow various denser degrees of manifested energy patterns or forms that the soul can use as tools of self-expression. Sir Arthur Avalon also described the chakras as the points of consciousness of I, the soul which is the self-expression of spirit and the I am, the spirit, the divine spark of the absolute or god. This is described as the bindu or the chakra, the point of the all knowledge space or the door to the soul and the link to the spirit, the all-in-all, the absolute. The Serpent Power book goes on to explain the three hundred and sixty tathic rays also to have a divic presence with each ray. Divas assist in manipulating tathic rays that are embedded in the chakras. The energy that the divas use in order to manipulate tathic rays within these chakras are the cosmic energies that's being conditioned by mind substance radiating from the manifested life form of the chakras in question. The thought forms and actions of each individual create a karmic signature that expresses energy patterns that serves to place limitations on its manifested portion of life. Divas are loyal servants of the lords of karma. The divas have been mistaken as angelic beings, but they are a race of beings whose sole purpose is to strictly work within the laws of karma by manipulating the energies brought about by the thought and actions of mankind and all other forms of life. The diva kingdom takes the energies that have been conditioned by the thoughts and actions of mankind and manipulate these energies in order to create and maintain the environment that we live in strictly according to the laws of karma. Prana is a Sanskrit word that means absolute energy. Prana is the universal principle of energy or force, therefore, all energy is derived from it. Prana is exhibited in all living beings and so-called non-living things. We are told in the ancient eastern teachings by yoga philosophy that prana radiates from a universal supply, absolute or god. Throughout the universe, galaxies and through the central sun of each galaxy and down to the solar logos, the suns of each solar system and out to the celestial bodies or planets such as the mother earth. Within this all pervasive pranas or cosmic energies that radiates from the absolute god, these pranas are expressed as the five modifications of cosmic energies, which is known as the five major pranas in Sanskrit terms mahabuddhas. The outpour of these mahabuddhas from the absolute starts the evolution process by subdividing into these five mahabuddhas. These five major modes of motion within prana, mahabuddhas, are described as the sensual impulse which keeps matter in a certain vibratory state, the mighty sun. Being the sensual impulse for our solar system maintains all life in the solar system with these pranas that radiate through it from the absolute. Each prana has a certain quality and is vibrated from the mighty sun every thirty-two minutes. The mighty sun releases the great and holy sacred word, the AUM. This word is the creative sound of the solar system. The sun releases this holy sonic vibration every thirty-two minutes. The quality of this word encompasses all power and all quality of sound. When this creative sonic vibration is released from the sun, it carries with it the five major pranas that is radiated through the solar system and beyond. The five major pranas in Sanskrit terms as mahabuddhas carries the following Sanskrit names describe the etheric qualities of the pranas. Table seven. Mahabuddhas, Sanskrit terms and brief meanings. Mahabuddha akasa, its nature, soniferous. Realm ether, type of motion, space, quality, etheric and sound. Number two, vayu, its nature is tangiferous, also belonging to ether realm. Type of motion, locomotion, is quality ear and touch. And the three, tejas, luminiferous, also ether. Type of motion, expansion, is quality fire and colors. Number four, appas, gas diffrus. Type of motion, contraction, it's quality water and taste. Number five, prethivi, odoriferous. Cohesive resistance, type of motion, is qualities earth and smell. Each one of these pranas and its many sub-aspects raised within it has, has a diva connected to it. These pranas are defined as the fire rays, the sun rays and moon rays. Excuse me. These rays assist in the evolution process from cosmic ether to subtler etheric matter to gross matter. Ancient translated doctrines on this subject describe them as the three hundred and sixty deva rays that manipulate the rays through the manas, mental substance that's being influenced by the thoughts and actions of man. In respect to the diva rays in their assistance in the evolution process of the human body, referred to the Serpent Power book by Arthur Avalon, Sir John Woodruff. Table eight. Petals, tadfas, sensitive matter and granti nuts. First, we have the basis spine, base of spine chakra, mudahara. Four petals, name of its tadfa is bhuta. Sensitive matter quality earth has fifty-six tathic rays. Group name is fire and utra granti conversion point. The sex center, svarishtana, has six petals, name of tadfa, agni. Sensitive matter quality fire. Sixty-two tathic rays. Group names, agni, kanda, also utra granti. Under the vishu granti, we have the solar plexus chakra, there's ten petals. This appas tadfa, water quality, has fifty-two tathic rays, its reflective group name is the sun. And the heart center, anahata, it's twelve petals, has tadfa vayu. Matter quality air, fifty-four tathic rays and belongs to a group named surya. Then under the brahma granti, we had the throat center, vishuda, sixteen petals. Name of tadfa is akasa, sensitive matter quality ether. Seventy-two tathic rays, its group name is the moon. And the chris chakra, ajna, it's two petals. The tadfa is manas. Its matter quality is mine, sixty-four tathic rays and its group name is chandra. The table above outlines the chakras and their Sanskrit names. In addition to the names of the chakras, it describes the six energy configurations within the chakra. Each one of the following energy configurations within the chakra serve to slow down the pranas by solidifying it. The energy configuration of the chakra petals, sonic vibrations, the name of the major tadfas for each chakra, the number of the tathic rays, the reflective qualities and group name and the conversion points of chakras to form the granti nuts, which are the strings of tathic matter groups that we spoke of earlier. The table is based on the information gathered from the Serpent Power book. The terrestrial flow of prana. Once the pranas reach the earth, the akasa prana aspect acts as a mother aspect. It surrounds the earth and conditions it to receive the other pranas. As the earth rotates on its axis and orbits around the sun, the pranas expresses the positive and negative aspects. The positive prana radiates through the earth during the daytime while sunlight is visible. During the nighttime, the sunlight is reflected from the moon and other planets creating the negative reflective aspect of prana. Positive prana travels from north to south and east to west through the earth and its surface. The negative prana travels south to north and west to east through the earth and its surface. The rotational flow of energy that the earth receives from the sun helps to create the existing realms of the earth, subtle and physical. From this, all life on earth was able to form and feed off to sustain their life. The prana develops two centers of action of gross matter that assists the soul in forming the human body. The centers of action of gross matter gather around the northern and southern centers. The northern center develops into the brain and the southern into the heart. The point at which positive and negative pranic radiation converge or form which they appear to diverge is the central line. The central lines are also the shishumna. The positive prana which travels in a right direction and negative prana travels in a left direction together creating neutral flow of prana called shishumna. This is a good place to mention that in several of the ancient tantric texts translated in the last one hundred plus years ago, it has stated or described the heart region as the original base vortex center or chakra. This means that the heart chakra represented the original plane or realm of existence that mankind lived and worked from. Now let me explain this subject a little further here. The flow of prana or cosmic energies on the surface and inner core of earth actually describes the realms of existence. Each concentration of flow of prana produced from the mahabindus manipulates the nada shakti powers that are radiated from the sun, creating the various realms of existence that the earth collects shakti power. Sorry. Creating various realms of existence. The earth collects shakti power and builds its subtle and physical realms of existence through the manifestation of several forms of cosmic fire brought forward from the logos of the earth. The physical aspect of this and some of the subtle physical aspect can be seen in nature every day. The plant life collects sunlight using the power, using this power to extract the raw minerals of the earth, turning it into nutritional substances that is used to nourish the animal and human life. The plant life also manufactures oxygen and releases it into the atmosphere. At the same time, it absorbs the carbon dioxide from the animal and human life. This process helps to build, form and maintain the life on earth as we know it. The radiation of the sun heats up the ocean, turning a portion of it into steam, releasing large quantities of the water into the atmosphere to create weather patterns that produce various qualities of life throughout the earth. Table nine. Name of chakras, mahabindu regions and its realms of existence. First, we have the saharasara from top down, the crown center. Its seed mantra is the AUM. As the thousands petal, number petals is a thousand. Next, the ajna, the chris center. Mahabindu region, utra, a moon, its seed mantra is the OM. Two petals, perfected, English terminology and a Sanskrit is the, and its realms, sorry. English term is realms perfected, the Sanskrit name is a tapo loka. Number five, we have the vishuda, chakra. Its mahabindu regions is utra and moon. Its seed mantra, HAM, has twelve, sixteen petals and its realms, the casual realm or the dana loka. Four anahata or the heart center. Mahabundh region is vishnu or sun, seed mantra, YAM. The petals, twelve, English realm balance or mahar loka. Number three, manipura, the solar plexus chakra. Its mahabundh realms, the vishnu or sun. Its seed mantra is RAM. Plus of ten petals and its realms, subtle or swa loka. Number two, svarishtana or sex center, belonging to the brahma earth mahabindu regions. Its seed mantra is the AM, number of petals, six. And the name of its realm is the astral, buvar loka. Then finally, mudahara, at the base of the spine, also belong to the brahma earth region. Its seed mantra is LAM. It's four petals, belongs to the physical or bu loka. The human flow of prana. The human flow of prana can be described from the nadi system. Nadi system can be described as subtle lines of force. That is the background of all manifested consciousness. That is, the background of all manifested consciousness. These nodic lines of force are the positive and negative flow of pranas. The word Nadi has the root Sanskrit word Nada, which means to move or flow. The positive vital flow of prana travels on the... Sorry. The positive vital flow of prana travels on the right side of the spinal column and carries the name of Pingala Nadies. The negative mental flow of pranas travels on the left side of the spinal column and carries the name Ida Nadies. As these Pingala and Ida Nadies intersect, a level of consciousness is possible for expression. The Nadi's number up to 238,000 Nadies with about 10,100 branches that extend even further. For great details, see Nature's Finer Forces text, a book. The Pingala Nadies are the subtle flow of positive energies. The Pingala Nadies also can be said to represent the arteries, the positive flow of blood charged with oxygen. The Ida Nadies are the subtle flow of negative energies. The Ida Nadies can also be said to represent the veins, negative flow of blood charged with carbon dioxide. The sun aspect of both Pingala and Ida Nadies, working with the blood vessels, the moon rays that reflects from the sun, represents Shishumna, the nervous system. The prana may move either way, right or left, under certain conditions, both ways. An aspect of Shishumna is also that place where the prana changes from the right to the left and from the left to the right. On the physical level, it is both the spinal canal and the cardiac canal. In Sanskrit terms, it is called the Brahmananda. Before any of the above activities with the human body can take place, the Brahmandas, the eggs of Brahma, must come into play. The absolute Brahma exhales, and the current of this great breath, the pranas or Mahabutas, moves forward within the mighty framework of the absolute presence, or the absolute's presence. The pranas have various powers and qualities that is unfolded by the forward motion within the great current of the brahmic breath of involution, a wave that involves brahmic substance, a solidification process. When these five major pranas or Mahabutas enter the body, it is identified with different names and functions. The following table came from the book Kundalini written by Swami Shivanananda. Table ten. Table ten, major and minor pranas. Confirm that's correct. Firstly, a prana, its color is yellow, location, the Anahata Chakra. Region is the chest, the chest. Its function is respiration. The sub-pranas, minor pranas, Naga. Does eruption, eruction, eruption, an act or instance of belching and hiccups. Next, we have Apana, its color is orange and red. Its location is the Mudara Chakra. Its region is the anus. Its function is discharge of urine and feces. Its sub-prana or minor prana is Kurma, and performs the function of opening the eyes. Next is Samana, its color is green, and is at the Manipura Chakra. Region is the navel. Its function is digestion, and its sub or minor pranas is Krikara, induces hunger and thirst. And we have Udana. Its color is violet blue. Its location is the Vishuddha Chakra. Its region is the throat, and its functions is deglutition. Takes the Jiva to Brahma in sleep, separates the physical body from the astral body at death. And its sub or minor pranas is the Devadatta, which does yawning. And then, next, we have the Viana prana. Its color is rose, it's a rose color. So, location is the Svani Sthana Chakra. Its region is the entire body. Its function is circulation of blood, and its minor or sub-pranas is Dananajaya, which causes decomposition of the body. The solar plexus chakra is the storehouse of prana or cosmic energies. It is the conjunction point of prana. In the science of pranayama, there are five major pranas mentioned, which are prana, apana, samana, udana, and viana. Stated in the above table, named five major and minor pranas. The major pranas seem to govern the subtle flow of cosmic energies within the subtle bodies and the human bodies. And the minor pranas or sub-pranas are brought into manifestation to assist in making various aspects possible within the gross physical body. The conjunction points of the major pranas at this chakra is the flow of prana and the flow of apana. The first major flow of prana, prana, travels up and down between the solar plexus chakra and the throat chakra continuously. The second major flow of prana, apana, travels down from the solar plexus chakra to the base of the spine chakra and back to the solar plexus chakra continuously. As the first major prana ascends towards the throat chakra from the solar plexus chakra, the second major prana, apana, moves from the base of the spine chakra to the solar plexus chakra. And when the prana falls from the throat chakra back down to the solar plexus chakra, the apana flows... The apana flow of prana falls back to the base of the spine chakra. In basic man, the karmic pressures do not allow these two pranic forces to completely join together. When man has purified the Nadi pathways that carry the prana and apana energies, a balancing of these pranic forces is karmically allowed, and the combined force activates the Manipura Chakra and accentuates the powers of this chakra, giving man the ability to operate on higher levels of consciousness. In the practice of pranayama, one of the main goals is to balance these two major pranas to the control of rhythmic breathing, which encompasses an even flow of inhalation and exhalation of breath and the measured retention of breath with the incorporation of concentration and visualization. The control of prana and apana helps to gain control over the other three major pranas, which are samana, udana, and viana. Samana is a major prana that is mainly concentrated in the navel area. The udana major prana is concentrated in the throat area. The viana major prana is located throughout the entire body. If you were to study any balanced pranayama system of exercises, you would notice that they activate five major pranas, which essentially assist in purifying the Nadi pathways so man can operate on higher states of consciousness. The soul pulls in the five major pranas, tathic modifications, and subdivides them into thirty-six thousand pairs, creating the Pingala Nadies, the Ida Nadies, that equals seventy-two thousand Nadies. A thin tube-like lines of force that push them through the solar plexus center, the Manipura Chakra, and then branches off into ten thousand one hundred branches. These branches move in all directions, identifying over one hundred major, minor, and minute chakras, vortex portals into the soul's essence, the bindu. As these Nadies, as these Nadies branches off, they expand and become smaller Nadies and greater in number until it reaches over 200,000 Nadies. The five major tathas, moles of sonic motions of prana, modifies into what is called five major pranas, which are prana, apana, samana, udana, and viana. Then, these modified pranas modify themselves again, creating five additional pranas that operate on a negative pranic level, which gives the Nadies its power over gross manifestation. As shown above in table three, the five minor pranas in Sanskrit terms are Naga, Kurma, Krikara, Devadatta, and Dananajaya. These ten pranas are manifested, processed, distributed, and regulated through the chakras. The human body has several ways of collecting this pranic force or cosmic energies, to sustain itself on the physical and mental planes of this gross manifestation. The brain absorbs the mental substance of this modified prana in several ways. The brain acts as a magnetic force over prana and mind substance, attracting this mental energy from the surrounding atmosphere and mind belt of Mother Earth. It also acts as a magnetic electronic instrument within the physical body and its subtle counterparts, where it regulates the mental energies to the physical nervous system and the nodic system, which is considered the subtler nervous system. The Nadi system defines or locates the chakra system or the different points of consciousness, the bindus for each chakra, embedded deep within the mental bodies of man. The Nadi system lays out the pathways of the cerebra, spinal cord, and its nervous system, which is a partial physical aspect of its manifestation. The Nadi system also could be considered the immediate subtler background power for the cerebral spinal cord and its nervous systems. The voice box is also another physical organ that has the ability of translating mental modified cosmic energies into gross modified energies that express itself in various levels of sonic vibrations. It also transmits various forms of modified sonic cosmic energies, prana, into the gross physical subtle realms of earth. In the later lessons, we go into great detail on this ancient and sacred science of sound, which in Sanskrit is expressed as Nada, Sabda, and Vak. Another two physical organs that manifest the power of this subtle pranic force modified as sonic vibration and a gaseous substance called oxygen and carbon dioxide is the heart and the lungs. The heart and lungs share in the responsibility of distributing subtle and gross cosmic energies throughout the physical body, mental, and subtle bodies. The heart pumps the oxygenated blood into the circuitry system that operates the artery system that circulates it throughout the entire body. The heart also pumps the blood that carries waste product called carbon dioxide out the circuitry system that operates the venous or vein system into the lungs for existence. The pumping action that the heart uses is a sonic vibrational force, which is another form of modified prana. The physical heart controls and sustains the life within the body with its sonic beats. The mystic heart, which is located six inches in front of the breastbone within the etheric body, also sustains life within the etheric and subtle bodies with hundreds of various sonic vibrational signatures that the adepts describe as a thousand bells ringing when the adept raises Kundalini to the heart center, Anahata Chakra, in a deep state of meditation. This peel of bells within the Anahata Chakra is also the subtle configuration behind the lungs and respiratory system. Just as the absolute god released the word, his sound vibration, the central sun and our sun within this solar system release the word also to create life, sustain life, and maintain life. Within the human makeup, the spirit releases the word and manifests the soul. And then, the soul releases the word, and it creates vortex portals to the essence of itself. Then, these vortex portals release the word to assist the soul in creating the Nadi system. In the formation of the Nadi system, the vortex portals or chakras are further defined by this Nadi system as the Nadies define its positive pranic flow, Pingala Nadies, and negative pranic flow, Ida Nadies, as it intersects these opposite forces and creates man's three major states of consciousness, superconscious mind, subconscious mind, and conscious mind. This subtler sonic vibration sound is a carrying agent for the sustaining vital life force prana throughout the whole body. Each chakra releases a sound vibration or a series of sonic vibrations that configures the pranic forces or vital life force to slow it down in order to bring about a gross manifestation of this prana and increase the flow of mind substance, which brings about a lower state of consciousness. The next set of major physical organs, organs, as influenced by the solar plexus chakra, is the stomach, small intestines, large intestines, the liver, the spleen, the pancreas, the kidneys, and the gallbladder. All the organs mentioned above share some type of responsibility of storing, processing, and distributing raw energy throughout the physical body. The solar plexus chakra, Manipura Chakra, is the subtle configuration behind these organs, and its main function is to store cosmic energy within the etheric and subtle bodies to bring about gross manifestation. The next subtle influence over the internal physical organs is the Svani Sthana Chakra, that gives subtle energies to male and female sexual organs. It sustains life, initiates lives, and maintains life on the gross physical plane of existence. The final major chakra that we will address in reference of the human body is the Mudahara Chakra, located at the base of the spine. This chakra gives power over the lower chakras that are never mentioned in reference to man's existence because it is the chakras that the animal kingdom has to control. This chakra initiates consciousness. It is where the spinal column begins, which gives a free flow to thought waves that use the spinal column as its superhighway to manifest this mental and vital energies as audible coherent sound, language, and intelligent functional movement of consciousness and unconscious movement, voluntary and involuntary movement. In the ancient tantric doctrine, the Mudahara Chakra is noted to have the power of gross existence. It's that realm that brings about a division of time, kala, past, present, and future. With this division of time came a division of the great Shakti consciousness, from one to the many, which created two major flows of energies with a static quality of power and a dynamic quality of power. This static flow of power that's divided at the mudharas chakra possesses a mental nature that permeates the flow of cosmic energies called the ida nattis. This dynamic flow of power that's divided at the mudharas, traveling in the right direction possesses a vital flow, sorry, a vital life force nature that permeates the flow of cosmic energies called the pingala nattis. The word nattis in, is a Sanskrit word, which has a root word nad that means to flow. The nattis described the type of energy flow, the quality of sadha, specific sound power, and the directional flow of cosmic energies. This left and right flow of energies brings about a series of forces that aid in creating gross manifestation. It is here where the soul reenacts the power of the four trinities that I spoke about in the fourth chapter. In the next chapter, on the chakras and nadi system of the human body, I will go into greater detail on how the sadha body, I'm sorry, I will go into greater detail on how the sadha power influences the subtle energy vortex centers, chakras. Alright. Thus concludes today's reading. Thank you very much, everyone, for sticking with us. This video will be kept on YouTube in our study sessions playlist. So you can go back and view it at your leisure. You can also pick up a copy of the text on Amazon or from the publisher. We'll see you Sunday with your highlights and your notes, any questions you may have on chapters seven and eight, and then next week we will pick up with chapters nine and ten. Thank you very much and we'll see you next time. Take care.